For Blue Springs High School. Four is the public hearing, conditional use for Casey Bobcat, and they have asked to continue that to Monday, January 28th. The number five is a site plan design review for also Blue Springs High School. Six is a master alternative sign for 2014 LLC, followed by other business adjournment. With that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair. I move that the minutes from December 10th from Planning Commission, December 10th, 2018, be approved as submitted.
I'll second it.
Okay, on the consent agenda is also the final plat for the estates at Chapman Farms. With the five conditions, would you like to amend your motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the final plat PF 12186712 with the five conditions be approved as submitted.
I'll second it.
Now it's seconded, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, now the final plat for the estates at Chapman Farms will also be heard by the City Council, January the 22nd, and they meet at 6 o'clock. So, thank you very much. Now, we do have a public hearing for Wind Shift Brewery. And let me read the instructions for the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and I'll call for exhibits from our city attorney. The staff will make their presentation, followed by the applicant making theirs. I'll call for any witnesses in favor and those opposed. We'll have any general discussion, followed by the close of the public hearing and we'll vote to make our recommendations to the City Council. So with that, I will open the public hearing, call for exhibits.
Madam Chair, I offer into the record the following exhibits. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 29, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
Okay. Mr. Wright's gonna give us the information on Wind Shift Brewery, public hearing, thank you.
All right, thank Chairman Banks and Planning Commissioners. Before you this evening is a request to rezone property located at 3421 Northwest Jefferson Street, from LI Light Industrial to GB General Business. This subject property covers approximately a little over half an acre, and includes an existing vehicle repair limited business and a former office tenant space. The applicant, Wind Shift Brewery, is requesting the zoning to change the tenant space from office to a bar tavern land use. The General Business zoning district would allow both the vehicle repair limited use that is existing and the new proposed bar and tavern use to both be in compliance with the UDC in this zoning district. The conference of plan does designate the subject properties corridor reinvestment and neighborhood retail. The subject property is the only property, along with Jefferson Street frontage, within 1,000 feet of Wood Chapel that is currently zoned, Light Industrial. All the other properties are zoned commercial, either general business or regional commercial, so it is fitting with the other commercial zoning districts within the corridor. Most of the light industrial zoning is concentrated up along Duncan Road, which requires access to, quick access to I-70, but visibility is not as critical as it would be for a commercial land use. The proposed bar and tavern use will operate out of a small portion of the building and the property has enough existing parking to accommodate the new use and still maintain the parking for the existing vehicle repair use. The proposed zoning is in line with the future land use designated in the conference of plan, and therefore staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request. And I'll be up to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
I'm, I didn't see in the staff report addressed anywhere what would be the proper zoning if this was just a brewery and not, and didn't have the small bar space in there as well?
There is another zoning dis, or another land use category for food production limited. That would accommodate it if it was just a brewery, and then there was just like small sampling onsite, but that's mostly if you're going to be brewing the beer and then bottling it and shipping it offsite for retail sales. But if you're gonna have a full bar on the inside with customer interaction, then it's treated more as a commercial use and not a food production use.
Okay, 'cause the brewery seemed to be a much more intensive use than the bar area, because the bar area was only 13 by 13, it didn't, wasn't gonna hold very many people.
Yeah, we looked, we looked at the definitions, the two, compared the two definitions, and based on the intent of the food production limited is really primarily a wholesale. You're basically brewing there and you're bottling and shipping offsite. And there can be some interaction, similar to a winery where you may take samples, but it wouldn't be somewhere where people would come and stay for a longer period of time. And so, under that, we looked at those definitions and the issues seem to be more in line with the bar tavern use.
Okay. And you may not know this, this may be a question for the applicant. Is there gonna be retail sales at this location as well, where they're doing carryout or something like that?
I'll let the applicant respond to that.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward? You will need to be sworn in.
Do you sound as where as someone who will do nothing else to help you guys?
I do.
If you would please state your name and address for record.
Yes, my name is Tony Di Placido. I live at 706 Northeast Hunters Road here in Blue Springs. I've been a resident here for about 25 years, and I currently work at this location. I have been there for 16, and I've worked for the owner of the building for over 20. I'm currently also the head brewer for Apex Ale Works and Independence, and I'm hoping to be able to use this small space so that I can create a kind of artisanal microbrewery that would allow for weekend sales, small batches, similar to what's going on in Brookside and St. Louis. It will be kind of a stop-in, quick. I do have plans for retail growlers, growlers to go, so people don't necessarily have to stay there, they can pop in and take local beer with them.
Okay. Are there other questions for the applicant? Gather up, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone opposed? Any other further discussion by the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I move that rezone RC 12186710 for Wind Shift Brewery be approved as submitted by staff.
Do I hear? Commissioner Fairbanks, second it? All right, this will be roll call.
Planning Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey? Is he not here?
He's not here.
Oh, I apologize, okay.
Absent.
All right. Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. Okay, that motion carried. It will also now be heard on Tuesday, January 22nd, at 6:00 PM with the City Council, okay? Now, we will go on to our public hearing, vacation of Blue Springs High School, and we will hear that as well as item five at the same time. So I'll open the public hearing, and the following guidelines go along. Public hearing and ask for the exhibits to be read, please.
Madam Chair, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 29, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
Okay, Mr. Wright?
All right, thank Chairman Banks and Commissioners. Before you this evening are two requests related to proposed building and site improvements to the Blue Springs High School campus at 2,000 Northwest Ashton Drive. The subject property does cover 38.38 acres, south of Ashton Drive and west of Northwest 19th Street. The first request is for the vacation of a 10-foot utility easement, which is generally located at the southwest corner of the building, of the existing building, which is shown, outlined here. Currently, only the, only the, only Electric has in there, and Kansas City Power and Light has electric lines in there, where they will be constructing a new building addition in this area. So, the school district is requesting to vacate this portion of the easement, and then want to have a reroute the easement there to the north of the current easement. All other utility companies have been contacted, and all utilities have acknowledged and responded to the request that they do not have any utilities in there. So this would only, it would affect all utilities, but the only utility in there currently is Electric, underground Electric, which will be relocated, and the school district has already worked that out with Kansas City Power and Light. The second request is for a site plan design review for the new building additions and site improvements to the high school. There's a total of 73,500 square feet of new building additions which are proposed, which would bring the total building size to a little under, or a little over 317,000 square feet. The largest building addition will be at the southwest corner of the site, shown here, which will include a little over 55,000 square feet, two-story addition, which will accommodate a new gym and band rooms. A second addition will connect the two east wings of the school for a new two-story addition, a little over 18,000 square feet for a new media center. Since the proposed building additions will not increase the total square footage by more than 25% of the overall building, any legal nonconformities onsite may remain. However, all new building additions and site improvements must meet current UDC requirements. In the staff report, it is noted that all building setbacks, building heights, and coverage do meet the current requirements for a prominent civic building. Access to the site will be provided through three, potentially four, access drives, three of which exist, and then there's potential for a fourth access drive to the far west of the new parking area. There is currently a bus drop-off lane, kind of in the center of the campus, that will be removed as part of this, and that traffic would be in the two center access drives, and loop, would loop around and exit out that direction. The current one-way, a Schedule C parking memo has been provided to confirm the proposed parking will adequately serve students, faculty, and staff. The current campus has 588 spaces, but 720 parking spaces are proposed, which is a net increase of 132 spaces than what currently exists. Student and staff population is projected to remain stable, as there are no new classrooms being added. All of the new additions really are for amenity spaces for students. There is a new parking lot at the northwest corner of the site that was recently installed in this area, and that does have 155 parking spaces within it, and that was intended to accommodate the loss of parking with this new building addition down here in the southwest corner. A building permit does need to be applied for that parking lot. There, the setback does not currently meet code from Ashton Drive, and will either need to be brought into compliance, or a variance may also be requested to reduce that setback. These improvements must be permitted with the new building additions. New landscaping is only required for the new parking lots, including the lot north of the main building entrance, which is a, the landscape plan is up on the screen right now. So they will have new street trees, as well as shrubs, where adjacent, where head and parking is adjacent to the right-of-way, to meet the continuous hedge requirement to screen parking from Ashton Drive. Although no open space landscaping is required for the site, they are providing some additional landscaping at the southwest corner of the new building addition in a courtyard area. The north parking lot, the north parking lot does meet and exceed the required plant units. However, the applicant is requesting an alternative compliance landscape plan for the northwest parking area. They have provided street trees, as well as the continuous hedge along the right-of-way that will screen parking from the street. However, they are requesting a reduction in the number of plant units and the mix of plant units within that, as well as requesting a waiver from the internal landscaping. There aren't any islands provided, but that is consistent with the rest of the parking area, and so staff does not have any concerns with that alternative compliance landscape plan. All landscaping must be installed in conjunction with the new building additions, and the new building additions will match the current building materials onsite, which is primarily brick, as well as architectural metal paneling as accent. Here's some images of the new building additions. This would be the, the new band addition at the southwest corner of the site. And then, or sorry, this is the new band addition at the southwest corner of the site, but all the new building materials will match what is currently existing to create a uniform look to the buildings. Staff does recommend approval of the vacation, subject to two conditions in the staff report, and also approval of the site plan design review with nine conditions, and I'll be up to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner?
I've got a question. Is the exterior that we're looking at right now going to be comparable to what Truman High School has just installed on their building?
I'm not familiar with what Truman has installed on their building, but possibly one of the applicants may, may be aware of that addition.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward? And whoever's gonna speak will all need to be sworn in.
I do.
Whoever's first? Your name and address, please.
Mr. Wright, thank you for that. It's good to see you guys again.
She will need, sorry, she'll need to get your name and address for the record.
Daniel Anderson, 1311 Southeast, East Ridge Circle, Blue Springs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt, good job. As I alluded to earlier, this fall, when we were talking about South, we're now moving over here to the other high school to complete the bigger package of what this bond is entailing. So we're very excited about that. In reference to your question, I'm not sure, I don't know if Matt or David knows on the Truman, but Matt will be able to allude to the materials that we're using, so that can maybe clarify that question for you on those.
There are up and down slats like this, and then there's a great big 3D T for Truman on the front of it, and it looks very similar to that Wildcat that's on there.
Okay, Matt, if you'd like.
Sir, you'll need to be also sworn in?
Matthew Keys, 5075 West 194th Street.
Sorry, you were already sworn in, excuse me. Go ahead.
Okay. The visual that you see there of the band addition, it is actually not representation of Truman that you're referencing. I do know that school that you're referencing. What's going on there is that's actually a glass system, so the louvers that are a part of that system are actually on the inside, not the outside, so you'll see a clean glass surface there, but then you also see the logo that's outboard that would be demarking the main entrance. So, it's, it's definitely, I would say, less aggressive than maybe Truman, but it's just a cleaner look that fits with the context of what's going on around the whole campus of the, of the high school.
Mr. Keys, which business are you with?
I'm with Holson Miller Architects.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to share?
Not right now.
Okay. Thought I'd just ask. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Phillips, Commissioner Phillips?
With, with all, with this addition, and I know that we're not actually adding any classroom spaces, this gonna now prepare this campus for having the freshmen over here as well?
At this time, no, they will remain at the freshman center until we have the bonding capacity, we think in three to five years, and then we will start the master planning as soon as we finish this to locate where the freshman annex will go, more than likely up in the northeast quadrant of that civic center area.
You're about to run out of space, so.
Yes, very much so. It is very tight.
Back when I was there, it was much, much smaller, so.
Yeah, 1972, and the LA was first done in the gym, and it's all the way from there.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I just want a clarification on that bus lane that's gonna be removed. So, the long strip is staying the same, it's just that short strip that's curving that's gonna be eliminated?
Yeah, what we found in, when I was associate principal there, we have, you know, the three entrances and stuff, very confusing for people coming into that school, trying to understand where do they need to enter, how does the traffic flow. So, working with our civil firm in Holson Miller, by removing that and possibly getting to the west side over there in the new parking lot, we can direct traffic out onto Ashton to the left, go to the west, and that, that way we can keep that middle lane going up to 22nd up by the pool, and that could be the right-hand turn, and therefore keeping the bus, the students, and the parents separate, so that we have a much more controlled exit plan.
Okay.
You're just gonna get rid of that one and have it come into the middle, right? And then go loop all the way out?
Yes, we will keep the same too, that right there with the large island, and then we're just removing that middle.
Circle Drive?
Yes.
Anyone else have questions? Gather up, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I will go ahead, any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Okay, yes.
I had, I had a question on the 185-foot.
Oh, okay.
If there were any returns?
Okay.
We received one letter back from Robert Gilmore, and it was return to sender, attempted, no, no address.
Is there anyone that is here that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone here in opposition? Okay, hearing none?
Madam Chair.
Any further discussion?
I'd also ask another question, and were there any opposition letters received?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. If nothing further, I will close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion for, now we're gonna have the public hearing for the vacation of Blue Springs High School first. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Phillips?
I would move for approval of the vacation, VAC 12186713.
Okay, there are two conditions?
With the two conditions.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and public hearing, we'll have a roll call.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That motion carried, that will be, our recommendation will go on to the City Council, and they will hear that January the 22nd. They also meet at 6 o'clock, not 6:30. All right, thank you. And we will go ahead and, if somebody, just keep in order for site plan and design review, will go ahead and vote on that, that would just mean, I would entertain a motion for the site design review for Blue Springs High School as well?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
I would also move for approval of the site plan and design review, SPDR 12186714 for Blue Springs High School, with the staff conditions.
Okay, there are? Three?
Nine.
Nine, there's nine staff conditions. Nine staff conditions for that, all right?
Yes, all nine of them.
All nine. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Mr. Fairbanks? Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so that was also approved, the site plan design review for Blue Springs High School with the nine staff conditions. All right, thank you. Now, item four, I would need a motion to continue, that was a public hearing for Casey Bobcat till Monday, January 28th. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
I would move to continue the public hearing for conditional use permit, CUP 12186720
of Casey Bobcat to the Monday, January 28th meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Commissioner Veal? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carried, and they will notify the applicant per their request that we moved. Okay, now we have the master alternative sign plan for 2014 LLC, and Nathan, jury is taking that for staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. For you is the request from Tony Russell with Midwest Sign Company on behalf of the property owner, 2014 LLC, and they're requesting to approve a pole sign at the location, 2410 Southwest, or Northwest South Outer Road, located, hold on. Located along South Outer, on the south side of South Outer Road, and it's about 1.47 acres where Target Time was previously, and it is one existing platted lot, zoned RC zoning. So, before you, the request is to allow a pole sign at this location, as you probably know, pole signs are prohibited in most places in the city, except they are allowed with approval from Planning Commission in the I-70 corridor, and since this is, which includes the frontage roads, and since South Outer is one of the frontage roads for I-70, this is within the I-70 corridor, according to the sign code. They are proposing one new pole sign for a future on-premise business, so they did not show a graphic on the sign at this point, since it is unknown, but they also, applicant also stated that they, the future tenant will most likely wish to cover the facade with a generic 10% of wall signage. So, all in all, staff calculated, based on the proposed pole sign, plus 10% of the wall signage, as with the measurements provided here, and, and all in all, they, the proposal, the pole, plus the 10% wall signage is more than what is allowed by code, so staff does recommend that only, allowing the pole sign does not increase the allowed signage per code, that the signage is only based on the linear footage of. That the signage is only based on the linear footage of frontage, which is, all in all, they'd be allowed 401 square feet, since they do have 178 linear feet of frontage along South Outer. And it is in the I-70 corridor, so rather than the two square feet per linear foot of frontage, it's allowed 2.25 square feet of sign area. So a total of 401 square feet is allowed. They were requesting 482. But staff believes that the pole sign and the balance of any other signage should still remain under the allowed signage area by sign code. Additionally, there are some existing signs, last time I checked, that from the previous tenant Target Time, these should be removed. Staff recommends that they're removed by January 31st, or if prior to sign permit issuance for any new signage, whichever occurs first. The pole sign in general is approximately 13, almost 14 feet across. And then the sign area itself is about a little over 10 feet tall. But the pole itself is 30 feet tall. They are proposing the required landscaping around the base of the sign, the pole sign. And they are proposing that the sign is set back 35 feet to the pole, which does amount to approximately 28 feet to the leading edge of the sign, which does meet the sign code setback requirements for freestanding signs, which is a minimum of 10 feet. So staff does recommend approval of this application based on the proposal with three conditions. One being the previous signage from the tenant is removed by January 31st or prior to sign permit issuance. And that the total sign area allowed is limited to the amount allowed by the sign code. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions, Commissioner Phillips?
Yes, can you tell me why we're looking at this now and not when there is an actual tenant going into the building? And we know exactly what that sign is going to be, what it's gonna look like? I'm foreseeing they want to come back later, and they decide they want that sign to be oval instead of rectangular or something like that.
So we can, I guess, with this approval, we can allow, on a staff administrative level, we could allow anything up to 30 feet tall. And as long as the sign area is the same, so approximately 14 times 10 feet tall, 140 square feet. As long as those parameters are met, we could change the sign size administratively. So I don't know if that is as much a concern from our side. But I guess the applicant might be able to answer why we're coming forward now rather than later. My guess is that the marketability of the site might be increased with a possible pole sign.
My concern is that we end up getting a pole sign that we don't necessarily want with a big white face on it that just sits there while they're looking for a tenant. And if we don't want a pole sign in the first place, we certainly don't want a blank one. So that's my concern.
I guess we can ask. Are there any other questions for staff?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Do we have any other, I guess, recent precedents as far as approving new pole signs? Have we done, I don't remember any, but do we have any recent ones that we've approved?
Yeah, we approved one recently, at the northwest corner of Woods Chapel and Interstate 70, Sports Luxury Auto. A year and a half or two years ago, maybe, we approved Andy's Frozen Custard. That was an existing sign that they repurposed, and we did approve the repurposed sign. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Jury, do I understand correctly that this pole will sit on top of a concrete block that is eight foot by eight foot by seven foot high? Am I incorrect?
I believe it's just the pole could be constructed, I guess, of anything that meets the structural requirements by building, for building and wind load. I don't know if we have any specific requirements that it be built that way per sign code. Just whatever is allowed structurally by building code.
Okay, if that were the case, then is the height taken with that height in the concrete block?
The, I'm guessing you're referencing the structural plans here. So the concrete block below this, I'm guessing you're, I assume you're referencing is below surface. And that's mainly the structural requirement for that wind load and the sizing of that pole. And yeah, the seven-foot deep by eight-feet-wide hold there that it's showing, that would be required by the building code, I'm assuming. And the line here, line here would be ground level. And so it'd be 30 feet above ground level.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jury. I in fact went to the second drawing instead of the first one, so I didn't see that ground support.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Fairbanks?
I'm still not clear on the total amount of signage based on the linear front feet of the lot and the 482 feet that they're requesting versus the 401 square feet that they're allowed?
Yeah, so total sign area is allowed by sign code per how many linear feet of frontage they have on a public right-of-way. So South Outer, they do have 178 feet of frontage along South Outer. And so if you take the sign codes allowed, square feet per linear foot times that 178, which is 2.25 times 178, you come up with the 401 square feet of sign area allowed on the entire property. Their proposal was a 142-square-foot sign plus 10% of the wall area, which amounted to about 340 square feet of wall signage. So those two together, 340 plus 142, equals 482 square feet of signage, which is 81 square feet more than allowed by code, which 401 versus 482.
So is it conceivable to reduce one or both of those specific things, either less signage on the building or a smaller pole sign?
So staff, we worded our condition based on allowing what's allowed by sign code. Because they may want different signage than just wall signs. So each wall sign, whether it's a directional sign or an awning sign or a wall sign, has their own maximum allowances for the sign code. And, but all of those are added up together to the maximum allowed on the property, which is that 401 square feet.
The 401 figure.
So we didn't want to limit them to just wall signage by putting a condition on it. We wanted to leave it open to what's allowed by sign code, but still just limit it to that total 401.
And you're sure that they understand that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward? If you could, you don't have to be sworn in. Just give her her name, your name and address. That would help.
Sure. My name is Tony Russell, and my address is 6914 West 101st Street in Overland Park, Kansas.
Okay.
So we've been working with the owner of this property for several years now. We put up the original Target Time sign for him. And just to address a few of the points made, the pole is generally made out of reinforced steel with a concrete base under it to hold it up. And we intend to build the sign as you see it in a rectangular shape. And the face of that can be removed and replaced with different tenets, depending on the next one. So what you're seeing here is what we intend to build. And as far as the blank sign face, I could speak to the owner. I'm sure he'd be more than happy to put something there as a placeholder. It could say 2014 LLC or possibly rental space if that's allowed by the sign code. But if that's a condition that we need to meet, we can definitely put something there. But really, the point of it is for the marketability of the building, so you can see it from the highways you pass. It makes it easier for him to rent out to a future tenant.
By the way, which sign company are you with?
Midwest Sign Company.
Midwest Sign Company, okay. And do you know if the owner has a potential tenant?
I don't actually know if he has one now. I know that he's shopping for one, and he's been looking around for one, so.
I'm not sure what I want to say here.
I don't like the idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea when you'd be looking to put the sign up?
We agree with the staff that the Target Time signs need to go down. We have a purchase order to do it. We were hoping to get this through so we could go and do all of this at once, put up the new sign, take down the old ones, freshen up the place and make it look nice for whoever's moving into it next.
And when are you looking to try to attempt a pole sign?
We would be able to start installation of it by the end of the month if we can get approval for it.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? I think their biggest concern is the pole sign's just gonna sit there. Empty, blank.
I understand that, and I understand that.
And I know that's not what the owner wants.
Put something in there, yeah. The owner doesn't want that either, so.
I gather that's just to attract someone to that site.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if the sign code allows it. But if we could put something up there saying the place was available to rent, we could put a face in there, just as well as a blank face.
As a concern, so that they could get it approved. And I don't know if you have the capability of seeing, if the pole sign could be approved, subject to when you obtain a tenant?
I can't answer that for the owner, but I'm sure he'd be okay with that. Yeah, if we can get approval for it, we...
Rather than have it just sit up there?
Yeah, and again, it's not my place to decide how the owner wants to spend his money. But he puts up a sign with a rectangular face on it. He gets a tenant in who wants something other than a rectangular face. He's incurred expense and is gonna have to completely undo it, redo it. It just doesn't seem sensible.
I don't, if I can speak up, I don't think that he would take on that expense. He would not let the tenant say, "I don't like that sign."
Well, if he's desperate enough for a tenant, he would.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know that he'd be doing it, though. Wouldn't that be advertising, trying to get the tenant in? And once the tenant is in, it's advertising that tenant?
Yes.
So the tenant would be happy to be advertised.
Well, the tenant would probably have to pay for the panel to go up. And what if they don't want to spend the money?
Yeah.
I mean, that takes money to put a panel in. And if the tenant doesn't want to spend that kind of money, maybe they don't want a pole sign. You don't know who you're gonna get.
That's my concern, yeah. You get a tenant in who, for whatever reason, doesn't even want a pole sign, doesn't need one. And then you're still stuck there with that white face.
Pole sign.
Yeah, pole sign there. So I don't like approving this without knowing what it is we're approving other than a white box.
Kind of like it's the horse, cuss before the horse.
That's my problem.
Well, and I don't think it's a good idea to put a "for rent" sign like that.
No, not a 30 by...
It's not a good idea.
I'm not sure that's allowed by the sign code anyway. In most cases, it's not.
15 by 10-foot for rent sign up there, space available or whatever.
No.
I don't think we've ever approved a pole sign before where we didn't know exactly what the sign itself was going to look like. That's...
We don't have to approve this.
I don't think we've ever been presented a sign like this before without knowing exactly what the sign was going to look like.
Does the sign have to be used designated only for that building?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Only on-premise.
It's on their property. Well... Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Is it possible to, like, table this until the owner can provide us with more information?
Rather than, well, we could. I'd need a motion to table.
Madam Chair, if I could, I just want to make sure that the commission isn't basing the decision on the content of the sign?
It's more the lack of content on the sign.
It's still content.
Well, yeah, there have been Supreme Court cases about us being able to regulate time, location and manner, but not necessarily the message of the sign, whether it's red or blue or white, or has text, doesn't have text, is less under our jurisdiction of regulation.
But we can regulate whether it has to be an on-premise sign. So I do want to assure the commission that this couldn't be just a blank sign. Let's say it's for rent example, and then, you know, somebody that's not on this property wants to use this as an advertising sign when they're nowhere near this property, say down on South 7th Highway or something like that. Any kind of message would be restricted to what is only advertising what's going on on this property.
So the only thing we could really do is just deny the pole sign, but approve the building signage?
Well, we don't even have to approve the building signage. That would be an automatic approval. But, and yeah, I'm not trying to censor content. Please, understand, I understand that's not what I'm trying to do at all. I just know that in general, we are trying to minimize the amount of pole signs even along that frontage. And to put a pole sign up with no purpose at this point.
Well, and you have to think about the tenant, too.
If we approve the pole sign and just say it can't be constructed until the tenant moves in, is that so that we don't end up with a blank sign? I hate to do something like that, too, but... That's my concern. I'm not trying to censor the content. I'm simply trying to not have a blank sign sitting up there. I guess a blank sign is saying something, too, but...
I don't see, unless, Jackie, you see a legal reason why we couldn't put a condition on the application that said that the pole sign, you know, staff could not issue a building permit until...
And that way, the tenant would know that the pole sign could be built. He wouldn't have to go through the approval process. He just, it wouldn't be there waiting, I guess that's the thing.
I don't see a problem with that.
I don't see a problem with that as a condition. And then, you know, all signs need a permit throughout the city with a few minor exceptions. But so anytime a new tenant, or even if they sell the building, a new building owner comes in and they buy the building and they want to put up the wall signage, they would need to get a permit for that. And so maybe a condition could read that, you know, the pole sign, a building permit shall not be issued for the pole sign until a sign permit is issued for the wall signage or any other signage for the building itself.
And, you know, this just occurred to me, but as justification for that condition, the current sign ordinance says that if a building is vacant for a certain amount of time, the pole sign has to come down.
I believe that is the case, yes.
For pole signs that haven't been approved. But if it is approved tonight, then, or any pole... any pole sign that's approved by planning commission, if it is vacant, then it does not necessarily have to come down.
So that removal condition doesn't apply for a pole sign that we've approved after the building is vacant and no longer being used for that same, you know, for a certain amount of time? I understand somebody else can come in and reuse the same pole. But if it's vacant for, I believe it's ninety days or something like that, before it gets reused, or then it's supposed to come down? Does that, that doesn't apply to?
That only applies to legal non-conforming or grandfathered signs. So any sign that's been approved legally by planning commission, then it is allowed to stay, provided that it doesn't.
Whether the building's there or not, it becomes a conform, it becomes a legal sign.
Well, if they take the building down, I'm not entirely sure.
And then again, like you said, the tenant may come in and not want the sign.
Yeah.
So it may be a moot point.
It could be somebody who doesn't even want a sign, or, again, wants a, you know, completely different shape or something like that. I'd rather see the whole sign just go up at the point where there's an actual sign going in.
Mr. Mallon, you were saying that the building permit cannot be issued until when? We were talking about what we could do?
Yeah, Nathan, help me out. A building permit couldn't be issued for the pole sign until a sign permit is applied for the building signage, or something along those lines. Trying to think about how that would work operationally with the way we intake permits and how we have, you know.
Until they apply for a business license at that location, maybe.
Until.
A business license could be that way, too.
I would think you'd want to, because if it's approved, then they could apply for a building permit tomorrow to build it. So that wouldn't solve what you're trying to solve. So you'd want it tied to a tenant of some sort.
Yeah, we'd want it tied to walls, well, yeah, tied to tenant signage, or to a business license.
Business license?
Something to that effect. That's a good point.
My only concern might be if the property owner wants to, they can utilize that as a for sale, or a real, or for lease sign as well, since it is, they'd have to go through the sign permitting process to allow that message. But they could use it as a for sale or for lease sign. In the meantime, and if, I don't know the intention of the property owner, but if they did want to use that pole sign as a for lease sign, in the meantime, they technically could.
They certainly could, yes.
Are we, are we allowing any kind of reader or message board to go up, to be allowed in connection with this, or would that be a separate approval process?
No. Message boards are only allowed on monument signs anyway, so it's not part of this.
So you'd have to have a sign made with that on there.
So it wouldn't be any kind of changeable copy or anything like that that could be put up there?
No.
Yeah, I may be making just too big a deal out of this. I don't know.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can we release the applicant and go into further discussion if we need?
No. We need to make a motion, or?
Well, the process would be.
We can let him sit down.
Oh, well, you can sit down. That's what you meant, let him sit down. Okay, I thought you meant let him go. No.
Let him sit down.
Yeah, he can rest.
We enclose that for a big business.
Poor thing. Yeah. Well, I think that, you know, if we tied it to where the building permit cannot be issued on the pole sign until there's a business license issued, then the tenant has the decision to make whether they want the pole sign or they don't want the pole sign. Then if that tenant doesn't, but there's another one, then he's got it approved already. Maybe the next tenant does.
It makes it, it gives him that.
Freedom to.
Lease attractiveness, because the pole sign is, the permission for the sign is already in place, even though the sign itself is not in place.
Yes.
So he doesn't have to wait a month or whatever to go through that approval process. To me, that would make me more comfortable. That's.
Well, that way, we have a tenant, and then they can decide whether they want a pole sign or not, because maybe it's a business that doesn't need a pole sign. But maybe they do want a pole sign now. He already got it approved. I don't know.
Too many unanswered questions.
Well, that gives them the freedom to have a pole sign or not have a pole sign. So we've already approved what it is, just you can't put it in unless there's a business license.
We have it approved, the square footage allowed.
Well, that would be a part of this, he gets four hundred and one, that's the maximum he gets, period.
And whether that's, whether that's the pole sign, or it's surface sign, or it's monument sign, or whatever it happens to be, he's still meeting that allowable sign square footage.
And the owner's not here, so. Yes, Mr. Mallon?
Yeah, I think, so the total amount of signage would not be changed. With this, if you were to approve this application, he would be limited to the maximum pole sign area?
They'd be limited, if this was approved, they'd be limited to the thirty-foot-tall pole sign with a hundred and forty-two square feet of sign area, plus whatever gets them to four oh one for the total sign area on the site. If it is not approved, they'd be allowed the four oh one square feet on the site regardless.
I was just wanting to clarify that if they wanted to come back and build a four hundred and one-square-foot pole sign and not have any building square footage or building signage, that this approval wouldn't allow them to do that, just to kind of clarify that, so.
It would allow for a smaller pole sign and more building-facing sides.
Yes, what we'd be approving is a maximum amount of pole signage as part of this master alternative sign plan.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve Master Alternative Sign Plan ASP one-two-one-eight-six-seven-oh-six with the three staff conditions and an additional condition that the building permit cannot be issued for the sign until there is a business license for that address.
I'll second.
Okay.
That seems like a reasonable condition, yes, that I believe staff would support.
Okay. Since we're now, we have a motion and a second, we have discussion. Would we need a lease? Because he could get a business license for the building without having to have a tenant, couldn't he? For his business?
Well, he'd be putting his own business in there if he did that. And if he wanted to put a pole sign up for his own business, he could do that.
I'm just saying, could he use that address without having a tenant?
There's still a tenant in there. There's.
Could he still use that as his address for his business without a tenant in it, and then have a business license for that address to put the pole sign in?
Yes.
We need a lease.
And without a tenant, yes.
Without a lease.
It doesn't have to be a lease, because, again, he may want to locate his own business in there, and that's fine.
Okay. That's not what I was saying.
I know what you're saying, but I'm.
Okay. All right. It's just discussion. That's what I think.
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
Okay, so we have a motion. You want to restate that motion one more time?
I move for approval of the sign permit, Alternative Sign Plan one-two-one-eight-six-seven-oh-six with three staff conditions, and a fourth condition that the building permit for the pole sign will not be issued until there is a business license at that address.
Okay. All right. We have a second. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
I think the noes have it. Let's roll call.
Planning Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
No.
Commissioner Appeal?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
No.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Beal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
No. Sounds different than it's.
Six to four.
Yep, six to four. Okay, motion carried. Motion passed, so, okay, with that condition, all right, if you'll make note of it. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Other business? Our next meeting will be Monday, January the twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, and we have the APA conference coming up, April thirteenth through the sixteenth. And we can send one, but I have an idea that since the cost is so great in San Francisco, we might consider, if anybody wants to forego not going, and maybe have more of us go to Tulsa when there's the Quad meeting, or the twenty-twenty's Houston, which is a lot less costly. So I'm just entertaining an idea that we have two from the staff going to San Francisco. I know it's very costly to go there, and that's just my idea. But, I mean, if there's somebody that's really wanting to go, I guess you can go, but to San Francisco. There is meetings all the time, so it's not like a tour for some of you that have never been. If you've ever been to conventions and you really go to meetings, that's what it is. So. Is there anybody that really wants to go? Or would you rather go to, we could send two probably to Tulsa. Not that San Francisco.
Yes, the APA conference this year will be a Quad State Conference with Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma, and Arkansas, which will be held in Tulsa. Typically, we budget for two planners and, I believe, two planning commissioners to go to that. And we typically budget for three from city, two planning, or two staff and a planning commissioner to go to the national conference. But with the cost of San Francisco, it's just one of those more expensive cities in the country, such as New York or Los Angeles or something like that. So there would, if a planning commissioner decided not to go to San Francisco, there would be additional funds to send more to the Quad State Conference. And then, like Chairman said, the next year's conference, twenty-twenty, is in Houston. So. And I'm not sure we have to figure it out tonight.
Give it some thought. Can you let us know when the Tulsa's going to be, so they can consider it if, when that comes up?
Yes, we can certainly look into that.
And you don't have to let me know tonight if you decide you really want to go to the San Francisco, just it came up.
Yeah, it's.
But you've got to book it.
Yeah, the conference registration and hotels are, conference registration fees go up after February thirteenth. Hotel rooms are filling up, and so we would need to know probably within the next week or two if somebody wanted to go.
Who would you contact, Madam Chair?
You can contact me, or Karen, or Tom.
If you do go, then that forfeits somebody going to Tulsa, because we can't, we aren't sending.
We would have to take a look at our overall budgets and the ability for us to send how many ever planning commissioners to Tulsa. But there would be a hotel, like, when the state conference was held in Kansas City this past fall, we were, you know, the costs were quite cheap, because there was no hotel stay involved. So anytime there's travel to, say, Tulsa, there would be a hotel cost. So we'd have to look at all the numbers, but yeah, we would likely be able to send somebody, an additional member, to Tulsa if we were to save the budget.
What is the purpose of the meeting in a nutshell? What do you do?
Education.
What does the planner do?
I'm sorry, I can't.
She wants to know about the meetings and what the purpose is and what you do.
Oh, the APA National Conference is, you know, the American Planning Association's National Professional Association Conference, usually starts, the bulk of the conference is usually from, say, Saturday to Tuesday, if not leads into Wednesday, but there's activities that precede it, and also throughout the time. Most of the conference is in a convention center, and you go from presentation to presentation throughout the day. They usually start at eight in the morning, and there's a block of presentations from, say, eight till ten, and then there's a second block from ten till twelve, and, you know, one to three, and then three to five. And so that's kind of the bulk of the day. And then at night, there's extra activities, which obviously cost more. But there's also mobile tours, walking tours. They fill it up pretty well with a, and oftentimes, it's the host committee in which the city is being put on, puts on quite a show and tell for their city. So it would be, you know, up-to-date planning theories, you know, kind of best practices from out, throughout the country, you know, different types of development, different types of long-range planning activities, unique plans that different cities are trying, you know, comprehensive plans, area plans, transportation plans, but also some redevelopment activities. And in each city, they, you know, it kind of has a unique story to tell, based upon its history and culture and stuff. And so I think in reading through some of the materials, there's a tour of Chinatown and a discussion about, you know, how that developed and how the planning has occurred for Chinatown, for example. But also some of the riverfront development and redevelopment. Housing, I would guess, is going to be a big part of this, this planning conference, especially in California and San Francisco with the high cost of housing and affordable housing. Typically, some of the buzzwords that come up more recently are resiliency and how communities react to natural disasters and set themselves up to be prepared for such things, but also sustainability and infrastructure and transportation. So it's kind of a show and tell for all the different cities in the country to talk about their best practices, and a chance for planners to share information and planning commissioners to learn, not only about the planning processes, but about, you know, kind of what's going on in other parts of the country, and to kind of get some ideas to bring back here to Blue Springs.
Thank you. That was informative.
Thank you. All right. If there, is there any other business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I saw my.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.